Okay, question discussion. There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Alright, we'll move to resolution illegal. First item A is a resolution twenty dash forty-six. Authorizing the write-off of uncollectible debts. Are you addressing this step?
Yes. So this is just more than two bills and other things. We keep that contact. So.
There weren't that many, really.
No.
I was surprised.
And if they're utility bills, they're not assessed by their pastor.
I'll move resolution, resolution twenty forty-six. Motion in a second on twenty dash forty-six. Did you get the second?
Yeah.
Discussion. There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item B, resolution twenty dash forty-seven approving the two thousand, two thousand twenty-one tax assessments for unpaid debts for Goodview County.
Well, these are the debtors' accounts and right us on the two of them.
I'm with resolution twenty forty-seven for the tax assessment for.
And I'll second.
Okay, discussion, comments, questions? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Thank you. Item C, resolution twenty dash forty-eight approving the two thousand twenty-one business license fee. Or license.
Yes, so this is the actual licenses and since the packet is gone, all general has returned their, their pay for getting payment for this back.
Was that the red lines where the people?
Their pre-businesses, P L, working on their, their free work and farming.
They're either opting out or they're choosing not to pay or they can't pay.
No, they're going to continue, but you tell me about the pay for.
It'll be on there next.
It'll be on there next.
Okay.
Let me plug up the closing, including dollars.
I'll move resolution twenty forty-eight, including the college general's business license. Question? Do you have a second? Can I get a second by my mic? Questions, comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item D, twenty, resolution twenty dash forty-nine, authorizing the write-off of outstanding checks.
Alright, so this is where the city have issued funds and made the checks on the fact. And since the packet went out, somebody noticed their name in the packet and came and picked up the check. So the one who signed the house is no longer going to be there.
Okay.
And if we're all good, I'll move resolution twenty forty-nine, the write-off of outstanding checks. Set the word of some others.
And I'll second.
Yeah. Discussion, questions? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item E, approve the two thousand twenty-one deputy fire chief election candidate. I think he's here, too. If I'm not mistaken. Aye, right?
I'm going to approve all the twenty twenty-one deputy fire chief election candidate.
Discussion, questions?
Thanks for.
Thank you, Kana. There being none, all those in favor say aye. Same sign. Thank you. Alright, item F, is the approve the communication director probation review. And there's a copy of the review in your packet. The personnel committee met with Elizabeth and went through criteria and decided to just kind of redo that job a little bit and add some more responsibility to make it full-time.
I'm going to be approved of communication, uh, probation review.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I do want to add that the, this, having this type of a role in the city has proven exceptionally helpful. There's a lot of tasks that COVID brought on this year that we wouldn't have been able to handle with our existing city staff. Because I was curious, I went back and looked at our paperwork packet, just to look over the job description again and to see what tasks we initially set up for this position to do and what that position has grown into. Courtney has done an excellent job at keeping our social media pages active. We have a very easy, easy to navigate, easy to find things on website, all the leading live streams. We're all in one place. And then with all of the COVID difficulties that have been thrown our way, Courtney has met that in stride with that Pineland Strunk campaign as well. I think a lot of the businesses appreciate that. I do see this job position as having an opportunity to grow, especially when it comes to those communication check trainings, responding to press, responding to public. I think those are the only opportunity to grow in this role. So one thing Courtney, for all the work he's done during the city's special this year.
Thank you, Sarah.
I know a lot of classes we've also over too, they just, because they're canceled. A lot of classes that I've also took, they're canceled. So it's been a little more difficult for them to take, take those.
Mr. Mayor, there's one question I do have to the last couple of months. Are we paying dog, like it's, we're paying for the sort of. Is that going to do okay, like I know, because Mr. King gets paid ahead of the year. He got paid for the year. So is that part of those coming back the last months that he's not fulfilling his position or how does that work? Have you taken on the whole of that?
Correct.
Back.
Yeah, and I mean.
Wayne resigned.
Yeah, but he got paid for the whole year.
Right.
Yeah, but we're kind of figuring it in for the rest of the year, still. So. You're doing the issue basically with your current hours.
Yeah.
It's all developed.
And then hopefully by early next year, a lot of trainings will open up probably to be taken.
Right.
And Mr. Mayor, if, if I can interject here, um, just to go back to reiterate what Kelly said, um, one thing that I know, I, I just want to let you all know and the public know is that a lot of what Courtney does is behind the scenes. So I know sometimes we don't see exactly what he does, the day-to-day tasks. But, um, as he reports directly to me, um, I am in constant communication with him. Um, every single day Courtney checks in and I always have, um, a list of tasks for him for that day and for the week and things like that. And we always have goals that we're working consistently towards. So I know it's a position that we necessarily don't see every day, but, uh, he definitely is going kind of above and beyond, um, those expectations and making sure he's checking in, things like that. And then just, uh, um, Counselor Freeze to, uh, answer your question. So there is somewhat, I, I have asked, um, Wayne to kind of do somewhat of a dual role. So he and Courtney over the next two months are kind of working side by side. So, um, I know he resigned, but I kind of asked him to stay through the end of the year. Um, just to kind of show Courtney exactly what it entails and to make sure that he's introduced to the correct contacts and things of that nature.
We have motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item G, approve the fire department purchase of a shipping container. We're going to talk about that.
I can a little bit more.
Alright, Kyle.
Did they give you a dollar amount, Elizabeth?
Yes, I, I have two thousand five hundred dollars is what was communicated with me.
Hey, Mayor Council, um, as Elizabeth stated, um, we're looking at purchasing a shipping container. Um, what we would use would, um, run live stimulant burns inside of it for these new members. To get more hands-on experience, um, we can only duplicate so much of an active fire without actually lighting a fire up. Um, and the only way to do that is hiring Riverland to come down with their burn trailer or us in-house, since we do have, um, level two instructors in our department. We can put on a training ourselves, doing the same thing that Riverland would charge us to come down and do. Yeah, you would do a regular house construction site on one end and then you could do, um, I think their plans is the one side, do search and rescue on the one side and do live burn on the other side of the trailer. I think it's a forty. Then I'm not sure where Nick has planned. I think that lift station.
Well, that's where we had it goes for most of the trains now.
Yeah.
Is that out by Fire Department?
No.
No.
Out by Outfront, we're past.
And we do a lot of car education, car fire drills out there.
Instruction will be secured out there, be live, so it's not going to be accessible to the public.
Any other questions, comments for Kyle? Thank you, Kyle. Motion in a second. Further discussion, comments, question? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Let's see, uh, resolution twenty dash fifty, authorizing the transfer fund for small business grant program. Like, did we use all our money?
Yeah, we did. We did all of this is, is to clean up the books per se. Um, so we, we did the fifty thousand dollar grant program through the E D A. So we distributed that money through, um, the E D A account. So we essentially just need to replenish that money from the general fund, since that's where the CARES money, um, went into. And we just need to replenish that into the E D A budget.
We got it all out on the fifteenth or before the fifteenth, so we're timely and everything?
Yep, correct. So every, everything was done before the November fifteenth guideline. Um, and that was with, at the Friday special council meeting, the final, um, CARES reporting, um, audit, report that you finalized on Friday.
Yeah, I first, I thank you specifically and Mitch for all the work you put into this. I think the community is all really benefited from it and, uh, I, and the people I talked to are, are very much appreciative of what you did and how you did it. Thank you, Mitch, for your hard work and, uh, just a little bit of a yes, but it's, you know, it's going to help.
Huge help for our business and those who were part of the many, right? This is some CARES act, some hard work, we didn't receive application.
Right.
Consider on the, grade on and.
Yep.
And then awarding officer for some doing.
I'll move to resolution twenty fifteen. Questions, comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item I is resolution twenty dash fifty-two, approving the revised assessment for Second Street Project. At least revisions coming from the public hearing. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so the resolution in front of you would adjust, uh, to the assessments or assessments for two of the properties, uh, from the October sixth hearing. Again, on October sixth, we had the public hearing for the, uh, proposed assessments. And then, um, and then you certified the assessment role, um, uh, that would be, you know, sent to the county. And there, the two properties that, um, we realized needed an adjustment, one is at three hundred Second Street Southwest. And that property, uh, was assessed one hundred and twenty-eight, uh, feet of side yard frontage originally. Uh, they did provide us with a certificate of survey showing that they owned one hundred twenty feet. So, uh, that would be adjusted to eight feet, uh, for the side yard frontage or the side yard, uh, which would reduce the assessment by approximately five hundred dollars to the amount of thirty-one thousand, or excuse me, yeah, thirty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents uh, from thirty-one thousand, seven hundred fifteen and dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, the other property is at two oh one Fourth Avenue Southwest. They were originally assessed a sanitary sewer service. Uh, but, um, following the meeting, when the contractors finished up with the underground, we found that the sanitary sewer was actually coming off of Fourth Avenue, so it was not replaced as part of the project. And, uh, so, uh, the resolution in front of you would reduce, uh, the assessment for against two hundred and one Fourth Avenue Southwest by approximately sixteen hundred dollars to the amount of seven thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Any?
Cause I, when we, when do we adjust these? Does this, does this money, is that going to fall back on? You have to talk to North, pick up, or how do we go about?
Yep, good question. Uh, no, the other ones were, were certified already, so, um, so we wouldn't. The, the sixteen hundred dollar one, this, the city, it, it's not paid for as part of the project, so there is no additional cost or anything. Uh, the other one, uh, the five hundred dollars, then, uh, that would be picked up by the, the city. That would be an additional city cost.
The contingency, does it contain anything?
Correct. Yep, yep, exactly. Yes, yep, yep. Yep, so we would actually, um, as part of this, we, we have the revised assessment role. So we would just replace the one that was previously approved, uh, with the one that, uh, with the revised amounts for the two properties.
Mayor, I make motion to resolution twenty fifty-two, requesting adjustments.
Okay, we've got motion to two twenty fifty. And there's a second, okay, further discussion, question for Greg?
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
For all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Item J is discussion on potential residential development, and I'm going to recuse myself from conversation and voting and turn it over to Elizabeth.
So, the city was contacted by an individual, um, because papers officially haven't been signed. Um, they wish to remain anonymous, which they can do up until a certain point. However, um, there is a quick turnaround, so it's a developer who's looking to, um, develop, uh, some, create some re, uh, new residential development. And, um, because it's a quick turnaround, what I am requesting from Council is that, um, to kind of strike a development agreement with the developer. I'm asking that Council authorizes staff and the utilities board committee to kind of enter into negotiations with the developer, along with, um, Mitch as part of the E D A.
So this is going to allow us to spur the project and help move along, correct?
Correct, this will move the project along, um, the developers under tight timelines. Uh, I can assure you that I, I do believe that this is a benefit for the city and that I think it would, um, be for the best of our, our community as a whole, um, to kind of enter into negotiations with this developer.
I'd say based on the information we've presented and allowing the project to move forward. Maybe I make a motion to the Council to direct that to move forward and, uh, conversate.
I'll second that whole time.
Discussion.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose all staying. Let's see, uh, we'll move the planning commission. We have a meeting tonight and we, uh, we've reviewed and there is a resolution in front of me, I believe, uh, from the planning commission for the Pierce Properties to a minor subdivision, lot split. Uh, Craig, I think you're going to probably handle this, right? I got the resolution.
Yeah, I have too many papers here. Uh, Mayor and Council, the, um, applicant, um, uh, let's see, Pierce Properties Two LLC owns an approximate five point nine acre parcel out on Bioscience Drive or Opportunity Drive. It's on the east side towards that temporary cul-de-sac that was, uh, placed, um, east. So this property is east of Corners, Cornerstone Baptist Church. Uh, they are proposing to split the parcel into, uh, two properties and, uh, creating a one point, uh, zero one acre parcel, uh, from that five point nine acres. And, um, uh, the proposal, uh, the application, uh, was, was submitted. Um, everything is in, in, uh, compliance with the city code. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it this evening and, uh, did recommend approval with a few conditions, uh, being placed on the, um, on the lot split. And, uh, those would be to, uh, one dedicate, uh, ten-foot utility easement along the boundaries of the property. There is a ten-foot utility easement that exists along Bioscience Drive. Uh, but we're asking for, uh, the applicant to provide a ten-foot wide utility easement on the west, north and east side of the property. Uh, this, uh, so on the west side and the north side, it would be split, uh, five feet on each side of the new parcel that's created. Uh, so that would give a, the utility companies the ability to install utilities, um, should they need to, around the property. Uh, the other, uh, condition is that the title opinion be, uh, looked at by, uh, Mr. Voss and his, his crew and, uh, have them look at that and approve the title work, um, on the property. And then that they, uh, applicant would, uh, file this with the county recorder as well. And the attached certificate of survey. Uh, so are there any questions at all on the, on the proposal or the application? I'm sorry, one, one thing I do want to point out too, on, on the application, um, item five, this could be worded a little bit differently, the, the way we ask this, but we're asking if this is going to create any lots being in violation of the, uh, city's ordinance. And, uh, they, they checked no, but, uh, they mean yes, it will not create any, um, any sort of, uh, uh, violation of, of the existing lots, so, uh, so that's, that was, should be a yes instead of a no, so. Yeah.
Given the history of this project, there is no issue with the style of building from a factory. When you're looking at pushing things forward, moving things forward. I mean, I remember conversations in the past, what, what the idea was for being out there, but this is all, this is all fine.
Right, yep, there, there's some flexibility in the, the uses. Um, and, and originally the, the applicant was looking at a, a rezoning this parcel. Uh, but in, in looking at the, the agreements that are in place, uh, we felt like this does fit. Uh, the use would fit the, uh, what is intended out there. Uh, so there, there is not a rezoning, um, application in front of you at all. Now, they've indicated they may come forward at a future date and time, uh, with, uh, or a future, uh, time to look at a rezone, but, uh, not at this time.
Yeah. We're moving to, uh, if you, uh, there's just something immediate work on.
Correct. Yep.
Are you looking for motion or recommendation and would you go to the resolution?
Well, yeah, look. That was a review, the resolution is item B, so if you want, unless you've got further questions on the review, uh, we can move to item B and that would be the actual resolution describing what we just talked about.
I'll make a motion to the resolution twenty dash fifty-one. I'll second.
Discussion, further question for Craig?
Yeah, you're welcome. Mayor, just one thing, um, in, with, so the, the revised resolution came, uh, was, was sent out here with the three conditions. So I'm thinking that's what you meant by the, uh, passing of the resolution, so.
Yeah, you're moving on the.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. I'll abstain, Stephanie. Thank you, Craig. Okay, uh, Public Works and Engineering, I don't know if you want to sit down, but we've got, uh, we've got a pay estimate number six to Schumacher estimating for a lot of money.
Alright. It's, it's somewhere in my papers here, but yeah, this would be for the work, uh, that was completed in October. Uh, it's not a final estimate, but it's, uh, close to a substantial completion for this year, which would include, uh, the, uh, the base lift of, of pavement and, uh, um, and all the work, underground utility work and surfacing work that has been completed to date.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions for the discussion with Craig? Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. We'll move to public input. Public input?
So, Mr. Mayor, I did receive, um, an email this afternoon and I said it's included as a handout. Our current golf cart ordinance does not, it's safe, you have to be eighteen and licensed driver to operate a golf cart on Pineland Road. Um, we did, uh, in error, issue a golf cart permit to someone without the driver's license. They only had their state ID. They did end up getting pulled over, received a ticket. And then we did revoke that, that license when that was made aware to us of our error.
So, this was an actual incident?
Yes, this actually happened. Um, and now they are asking us to revise our current golf cart ordinance with language that those who are handicapped can and do not have a, that Minnesota driver's license can operate on Second Street Golf. And I would be curious to hear Bob's perspective, because I was notified about this a couple of days after it happened. And a person related to the resident had asked me what action they can take going forward. Understand the intention, is that requiring someone to have a license, but I'm sure they're not reckless for driving with the golf cart or other unit, but I don't know what accommodations can be made with this new incident popping up.
And I, personally, I'm not comfortable having that licensed people driving on vehicles on our streets. It says such as a golf or could be side by side. Or whatever, which I believe that incident was, like I said, in the same. So, I mean, I understand the problem here, but I think we're opening a door here to come back to bias. I think it, and it still has swerves and.
Well, they have people that follow the law, just like anyone else operating vehicle on the street, which I'm not comfortable putting someone on without a license that hasn't been certified to drive. I mean, not that you're trying to limit anyone with a disability, but there'd be the expectation that they'd have to ride by the law and not be driving against traffic, driving sidewalks and driving. You know, not within the parameters of what a license is allowed. That could be a concern.
Yeah, I think it's just something you say, drive on the streets, they got to be licensed to drive, but I, I.
I think it is important to note in this particular incident, though, the person with a disability needs transportation to get to the grocery store, to get to doctor's appointments, without that mode of transportation, they're S O L. So I would be curious to know if the cities, the city can do something to accommodate this incident and ones like it. Responsible drivers who follow the rules of the road but have a physical disability or does not allow them to this way to drive.
Well, that could simply issue a warrant for some, for a disability. That's why we have senior citizens in town that can operate, that can function and operate on the sidewalk. Because it's issued by law, so that's a covered disability. So you do provide those allowances of, to people that have disabilities to move and to be able to transport. The protection we have to provide, I believe, this kind of more risk pedestrian in town, who puts something about a license on a vehicle that can go three to forty miles an hour, they get hit, that's going to come back on the city or they're going to say, wire and issue a license assignment, can't operate, shouldn't be.
Right, no, that's, yeah, that totally makes sense. Can we direct city staff to respond to the resident in question here? Put that explanation on, even though you may not be able to get this issue fixed at the city level, contact your doctor, and then who is Counselor Freeze I mentioned? Is that something you can direct city staff to do, to contact them with that information?
Well, you're sure welcome to make a motion to that effect.
Before, before I make that motion, I want to hear your thoughts.
Right, I, I, personally, I think to approve the amendment of the language to include this particular situation is putting us in kind of a precarious position. You know, they got a ticket, that's kind of unfortunate. I, I agree with you, Kelly, I think, you know, it's nice that somehow we're accommodating here. But we have to think about the city and the liability issues. Uh, if we amend our language to include this provision, then all of a sudden, you know, it just, it could be a problem.
To clarify, they didn't get a ticket because of maybe driving wrong doing on our part, they got a ticket simply because they weren't licensed properly? No, non-safeguarding?
You know, you have to have reason to stop. Yeah, they have done some.
Okay.
Reach that.
And I can touch base on that, so his slow-moving vehicle sign was blocked by a basket. So, the officer could not see the slow-moving vehicle, sign it on the back of the car, but he did have that on. It just wasn't visible, that's why he was stopped originally.
All right. We, uh, we also, I love the Valley Transit bus, I think I might have named it that name, but I'm bad. I'm gonna speak highly of that bus, works extremely well, my children, uh, and I'll focus for them, they can care around town. And I can read some road for different things, uh, before they have a license. This is touching, because you, you want to find time to, to be insensitive to somebody with a disability. Uh, insensitive to their needs to get around to the points, to rush to shopping, I don't, I think it creates a safety issue. Liability and lawsuits of one day, uh, putting somebody on license on the streets to drive, it's a safety issue. State issues driver licenses for a reason.
Yeah, I, I would back up, hopefully, Hill Grant's statement, there is no, there is no intention on behalf of the city to, uh, to, to go after someone that has a disability, but you're not the one to accommodate that. Uh, but we've always, I think the councils are doing a good job looking at the fact that they're looking at the city as a whole, not just certain individuals. Like, looking at the city as a whole and protecting our community and, uh, trying to provide the information to the individual if they need that information. You know, there's always opportunities down the road to look at accommodations and whether or not we can make accommodations for transportation. But to me, I mean, the, the way that this letter is written, I'm not comfortable at all, uh, moving slowly, I have to do the wording. Especially when you're dealing with all kind of leaders with a disability, I think, that can be a very difficult one.
And Councilor Freeze, go reiterate what we said earlier, this resident can contact their doctor and get a specific, okay. I would like to make a motion to direct city staff to contact or reply to the resident with that information on how they can pursue this on a non-city ordinance.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, I'm, I'm trying to divine the, the will of the council about this issue and figure out where you're at. Let me just confess, though, Councilor, you started out by saying, I want to hear what the city attorney thinks. The city attorney wants to hear what he thinks too, because I, I don't know the answer, I'm sitting here right now. Uh, what I do know is that there is a, there is a state law that sort of comprehensively says what authority counties and cities have over establishing regulations about motor vehicles on and adjacent to in the right of way, but not on the paved portion of the right of way. So, what I, I think I know off the top of my head is that, for example, on a county road, folks that are not licensed, that are a certain age, can drive snowmobile and ditch as long as they've got certain certifications, and counties, I don't think can do anything about it, I think that's just what, what the state law says that. As far as in cities, I think the general principle is that if you're gonna drive a motor vehicle on a city street, you have to have a license. Whether there is an exception in the state law that will allow somebody with a handicap to drive a golf cart, is that's, now I'm starting to make it up. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the statute says about that, so I don't know whether the city has any authority over that question or not. Um, and, and I don't want to get in the way of your motion, I think your motion is fine as it's, as it's stated, but I don't know that contacting law enforcement, with the doctors, and what matters. I, I have no reason to believe that that makes any difference at all, so.
Yeah, I don't think a doctor can say, yeah, but, uh, side by side, whatever. You know, I don't, maybe they can all get mobility support.
And that's really intentional, the license.
There's nothing that we're compromising with the American Disability Act, by limiting this individual, correct?
Yeah, mayor and council, I mean, I, I, the real answer is I don't know, but I think I would know if the answer to that was yes, you are, you're violating the ADA if you don't violate this. I think I would know that, and I don't know that, I'm sure, so.
All right.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for their clarification, I just want to reiterate that number goes up to this particular resident, and we cannot treat things on case-by-case basis, I confess. Again, I want to express that this is a valid concern, and I would understand why that would be frustrating.
Yeah. So, but mayor and council, just to state, but I think it sounds like it's the obvious. I guess, to the extent the city code says we can issue licenses to let people, or approvals of some kind to drive golf carts on city streets when in fact we can't do that, we might want to take a look at that ordinance and, and, and change that. I mean, I, I don't obviously want fourteen-year-olds coming in and getting a permit and then getting pulled over, and it's not a very great place to be.
I agree.
From what I understand, our current ordinance language for things like golf carts says they have to have a state license.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that situation, unfortunately, requires.
Got it, okay.
As well as the.
All right. Got it. Okay, we made, did we make a motion? Yeah, we did a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, thank you. Well, Marie, are you still there?
I am. Oh, there I am, okay. Um, hello, council and mayor Steele. Uh, I just wanted to, um, report about our first Remember Project. The first viewing that we had of Steering Into the Skid was October twentieth. It was at two o'clock in the afternoon, and we started out with approximately fifty participants on our Zoom meeting. It was two hours, a little over two hours. Um, a lot of the people were people that were getting social work credit, um, continuing education units. So, uh, it was a fairly large group of social workers from various counties, including Dodge, Olmsted, and Goodhue. Um, Marty Kelly was on that event for the first hour anyway, and then he had to go to another meeting. Um, and we retained about sixty-five to seventy percent of the people all the way through the two hours, which I thought was really good. Uh, and so mainly what I wanted to do tonight was make it official that, um, our next event is going to be this coming Sunday afternoon at two o'clock, actually with a login time of one forty-five. It will be the same place, Steering Into the Skid. Um, and, uh, anyone who wants information, um, can, I guess I could give, uh, Elizabeth my email or whatever, and people could contact her. Um, it is, there is an ad actually in today's shopper, or tomorrow's shopper, I guess, that gives the information, people can contact me and I can give them, um, the, uh, Eventbrite link to register. It's a free event, it's for two hours, and, um, it's open to the whole community. It's, it's again about educating people about how to help people with dementia. And considering November is, um, family, National Family Caregivers Month, this is an extremely important month to showcase people with dementia, memory loss, and how our community can help them and their family caregivers.
And to iterate, that is on Sunday, November twenty-second.
Sunday, November twenty-second, at, uh, one forty-five will be the first login time. They have about three choirs that you get to see, people with dementia and their caregivers. Um, one from the cities, the one from Rochester called Resounding Voices, and then another one called, um, Alive and Kicking, I think, out of the Twin Cities. And then at two o'clock, uh, the event starts with, um, an introduction by me, invitation, or a welcome by me, I guess. Um, and that's twenty to twenty-five minute play, and then we have three discussions, um, three questions afterwards in separate Zoom mini rooms of discussion. Um, and we all had some great things, actually, Councilor Freeze was on that one, um, the one that we had on the twentieth, right, David? Yeah.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Any other Zoom participants, Courtney?
Nope.
Okay, public input? Well, I get to give out some certificates tonight, for those newly elected officials. We've got, uh, this is certificate of election, uh, which says that you ran a fair and balanced election, you didn't count any votes late or anything like that. So, uh, we've got two council members and a mayor, so, uh. What about them?
You want to take your mask off, Mike?
Don't let him take his mask off, we got other officials. And then, uh, last but certainly not least, our new mayor. Stephen Freeze. Thank you all. Okay, well, I guess, uh, if there's all the public input, we'll move to legal. Bob, you got something to say?
Yeah, uh, so mayor and council, I don't have any report, but totally editorial comment. I think I've been here as long as anybody now, believe it or not, uh, all the way back to the beginning of the tower project. So let me just say, I'm, I am too, it's not my place to be happy or not happy about things, but I'm happy to see that there is gonna be a subdivision out there, that there may be some development, or like me, there will be some development. This, this community, let me tell you, representing lots of communities, has worked long and hard at, at community development. And so it's well deserved, so congratulations and let's hope for the best.
Uh, claims?
Make a motion to approve claims.
A motion to approve claim, claim, second, discussion. There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, thank you. Uh, department reports? I see something from Van Horn Public Library.
I, uh, apologize for not having this in your packet packet, but I wanted to wait until I had just had a conversation with my board about being open because of all the numbers that are spiking right now. So, I gave everyone on council a copy of this, but starting on Monday, this coming Monday, the twenty-third, we will be, um, open for only one person or family unit at a time during our normal hours. So we have been open for ten people at any given time, we're gonna limit that to one family or one person. Um, and we're also doing curbside service. We are offering appointments, so if you know that you want to stop by at three-thirty after school, you can certainly do that. Um, but you don't necessarily have to have an appointment to do that. So you'll be seeing stuff on our website and on Facebook about all of this tomorrow morning, so. That's something new. Um, we have an online catalog app, I kind of covered this last month, but wanted to reiterate it this month. Uh, so on your smart device, if you look for Selco Libraries in your app store, you'll find an app that gives you the catalog for the library, lets you look at your account and all kinds of other information. It's handy. Uh, we still have light-up, Van Horn Public Libraries from the old, uh, Chamber of Commerce Drive that they had, fundraiser that they had, we, we're selling them for five dollars this year, so come by and get a piece of our history and a wonderful little white elephant gift, if nothing else. And we now have Storytime kits available, we're not able to do Storytime in the library right now, but we have put together, I believe it's ten or twelve kits based on a certain topic, so dinosaurs, owls and bats, uh, ABCs, that kind of thing. They've got a variety of books, they've also got some of our songs that we sing during Storytime, and then some, uh, theme-specific songs as well, so, and crafts, so Heidi's been hard at work at that. Otherwise, I just want to highlight that we, um, still have a very strong circulation, even though COVID is happening right now, and Pine Island borrowers were, uh, over a third, which hasn't happened for a while, so a lot of people are coming into the library. And, uh, next month, I'll actually have a graph on this, um, showing the numbers that we've had since COVID started. Um, I've been tracking every day, so it's kind of interesting to see the, the way things have been going up and down, so. Thank you for your time, and I'll email this to you as well, Steph.
Thank you, Rachel. Public Works? EDA, fire department. Okay, I guess we're done, I'll take a motion to adjourn.